Okay, I'd like to call it off for this regular trustee meeting. Today's date is July seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five, the time is six thirty P. M. For an accurate account of the meeting's video and audio can be found at www.junoattp.com. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. McMurray.
Here.
Ms. Vaughn.
Here.
Mr. Antonet.
Here. Also with us this evening is zip fiscal officer Patrick Myers, assistant fiscal officer, H. R. Donna Batten, office manager Deana Brown, director of roads, bridges, parks, Lauren Fitzpatrick, police chief James McMillan, fire chief Joe Ponzi, director of zoning and development Joe Schaefer, township administrator Paul Wise, and communications director Leslie Strater. At this time, I'd ask those who are able to stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
First item on the agenda is fiscal officer report.
Thanks, sir. I just have a couple of things. I would ask approval of trustee meeting minutes, the June tenth, two thousand twenty-five regular trustee meeting, and the June twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-five special trustee meeting.
I move to approve the following trustee meeting minutes, June tenth, two thousand twenty-five regular trustee meeting, June twenty-sixth, special trustee meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Hi.
Annette can I have it?
Annette can you have it? Roll.
Ms. McMurray.
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Antonet.
Yes.
Thank you. I'll have financials for your review. These are the June financials. Everything's balanced. I'll give you the balances. The total balance is twenty-five million, nine hundred twenty-one thousand, nine hundred twenty-five dollars and twelve cents. The way that breaks out is the fifth third account is nineteen million, five hundred four thousand, six hundred thirty-seven dollars and sixty-three cents. The Star Ohio investment account is three million, seven hundred seventy-nine thousand, one hundred fifteen dollars and eighteen cents, and the primary account of two million, six hundred thirty-eight thousand, one hundred seventy-two dollars and thirty-one cents. And again, I'll have this through your review, and there are no adjustments, and everything's reconciled. And unless you have anything for me, I don't have anything else.
Thanks, Pat.
You're welcome.
At this time, we'll ask for public comment. I would ask as you come up, speak into the microphone, give your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Dan Riggle. I live at fifty-four forty-four Teresa's Trail. Sebastian Benert spoke at the June tenth trustees' meeting and proposed the purchase of land between Red Bank and Hughes Road for the development of a park or a trail. The trail would connect Brighton Woods, Brighton Woods Reserve, and Teresa's Trail. Sebastian also visited several Teresa's Trail properties on July fourth to communicate the same proposal. I'm only representing my own property on Teresa's Trail, no one else on the trail, just myself. I'm not their spokesperson. However, several neighbors have disapproved this proposal during our discussions. In my opinion, the proposed amount of land would not provide an adequate amount of recreation area to be considered a park or a trail. The connecting neighborhoods do not have sidewalks, so trails would be short and terminate in the front yard of two Teresa's Trail properties, leaving potential visitors confused. The potential purchase and maintenance costs, limited space, disappointed visitors, and upset residents provide a low return on investment. For these reasons, I don't believe this is in the best interests of the township. On a related matter, Sebastian introduced himself as a Hughes Road resident, but also mentioned he is on the zoning commission. If this is not an official zoning issue, then this borderlines abuse of position and misrepresentation. I suggest someone remind Sebastian to keep his personal ideas separate from his professional duties. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jacqueline Lane. I'm at eight-two-seven-one Beach Avenue. I'm new here and new to this preceding environment, so excuse me if I'm not following proper procedure. I'm here specifically for the information I found out last night about a resolution to ban e-bikes from local parks. I have an e-bike. I've had it for the second season, and I've put almost twelve hundred miles on my e-bike, and most of that's through, you know, the trails nearby. I have logged a lot of time on my e-bike, and I've invested a lot of money. I have witnessed people not sharing the trail with bikers, those are pedestrians. I've witnessed people on regular bikes that have gone very fast and crashed in front of me. I've actually stopped and made sure that gentleman was okay and wasn't hurt, wasn't bleeding. He was just going too fast, going around a curve. I've witnessed on the road of Three C Highway, Pelotonia riders taking up all of the road and people passing them on the curve, causing, you know, a hazard or danger to oncoming traffic. So I'm opposed to the banning of e-bikes on our trails. I think that if the few individuals that have caused problems with it was named primarily as teenagers, then they should be the ones that are being penalized for this and not the general public. And I also feel that their parents should take a role in owning that responsibility. So I'm here to tell you that I would be sorely disappointed if you banned e-bikes from our trails. Okay? Thank you.
My name's John McHale. I'm at five-three-one-one Slater Ridge in Westerville. I wasn't sure about what she was talking about with the banning e-bikes, so I'm not completely up to speed on it, but part of my cardiac rehab is to do my e-bike and go for anywhere between a five and an eleven-mile ride per day. If you ban e-bikes, that's going to be a problem for people in my situation where I'm trying to keep myself healthy and do what I'm trying to do. I'm not disruptive to anyone on the parks. I notify when I'm passing and maintain an appropriate speed level. I'm not trying to race around at twenty miles an hour. My e-bike is, it's called an assist bike, so I try to do the nine miles per hour myself, but if I'm getting tired or going up a hill or doing something, it can assist me to maintain that speed, but that's all that it does. So I would be really opposed to you banning e-bikes for especially people like myself that's trying to be part of a cardiac rehab program. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm here to talk about the e-bike issue as well. And Renee, I want to thank you for your invitations to the public to come speak, you know, on topics that concern us, because I brought it up a couple of weeks ago and one of Renee's Saturday meetings before I heard from everything else. And I live in Westerville Reserve. My name's Brett Watson, six-seven-nine-nine Regency Drive, and we watch the bikes go by. It's one of the things that we enjoy doing, and for the most part, most of the e-bikes are fine, they're harmless, you wouldn't even know they're e-bikes. And then there's the occasional e-bike that goes by that's going, you know, thirty to forty miles an hour by my estimates, and they look dangerous, like they could hurt someone. So I brought it to Renee's attention a couple of weeks ago. I said, I think there needs to be an awareness, you know, in our township, both as residents that don't ride the bikes and those that do. And so I started looking into it a little bit, and there's actually, you know, an Ohio revised code, forty-five-eleven dot five-two-two. And I've learned that with what was just mentioned about the assisted bikes, there's a class, three different classes of e-bikes, one, two, and three. Class one and two. Class one is just a pedal-assisted. Class two can be assisted without pedaling, but they're limited to twenty miles an hour. And according to this revised code in the state of Ohio, they are legal on bike trails. And, but they have to be limited to twenty miles an hour, and I think if they were, I don't think too many people would have problems with them. I have seen several that I've clocked on the streets going, you know, in excess of thirty-five, sometimes to forty miles an hour, ridden by very young people. The class three bikes, according to this, if I'm interpreting correctly, we'll defer to our police to validate what I'm reading here at some future point, but they can go twenty-eight miles an hour, and you must be sixteen years old to ride them. And in some cases, if they're on the street, they have to be registered and licensed. So I ride a regular pedal bike. I haven't ridden an e-bike yet, but I think it'd be terrible to completely restrict them, particularly when Ohio revised code says they're, you know, can be used on our bike trails. I just think that we need to start off with maybe an awareness of people, you know, and parents of some of these people, you know, have an understanding. And then while we're on the topic of bikes leaking on our pass, I did call the maintenance department, and there's a lot of the, there's a lot of tree branches along Maxtown Road, just east of Heritage Church, for example, and I think on the bike path between Park Bend and Center Green Park, where the branches are getting to the point where you can't hardly use the trail, because some of the branches are low and getting in the way. And so the response I got was, is private property owners need to trim the trees, and Genoa maintains the bike trails. And some of the trees that are, you know, interfering with the bike trails, you know, I don't know if they're on private property or public property, and it's not terrible, but it'd be nice if, you know, we could drive down some of those and maybe clean that up a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Tony de Blasey. I live at six-five-zero-one Sunbury Road, and I want to speak to a little bit about the annexation City Columbus is looking towards for the properties along Hoover. I've, I appreciate information I got from the township here. Trustee Vaughn gave me, sent me to, gave me an opportunity to see, read some of the draft annexation copies. It's been helpful, but I have some concerns. I've been a, my wife and I have been residents here myself for sixty-plus years in the township, forty years, raising our family here, and had the opportunity to get our property on Sunbury Road, which is just north of Maxtown there, on Hoover Reservoir. We had joined city property to the reservoir. So as much as I understand, the city Columbus desired to annex it to protect their interests there, I have some concerns as a resident, and we've been in very good cooperation with the city for twenty years, reforesting and redeveloping, wildflowers and plantings and such, so we're pretty friendly with the city. But my concern is, so far, we've lost probably about eighty-five percent of our view of the lake as it is. We access the lake, but as I read the agreement, indications are it's for a twenty-five-year period, and that where I first became aware of the information was through our township newsletter, which kind of indicates that there'd be established binding terms to protect the township residents. And I guess I'm not real sure what the terms are that are being negotiated specifically to protect me as a constituent of yours and township residents. Frankly, I'd rather have the township as my neighbor rather than City Columbus as my neighbor. Kinder and gentler people here, for sure. Not to disparage City Columbus, I work there. But, so my concerns specifically are, and I don't know the answer to this, this would come from zoning, I guess, okay? So when the city annexes this, City Columbus, and I suspect it's, in Genoa Township, it's presently they're bound to the zoning of the township. That's a question, I don't know the answer, but I think I'd like to know. And I think in terms of hypothetically, if I were to choose to build a, like a twenty-foot-high masonry block wall on my property towards the lake, I don't think I'd be able to do that under township rules. Now, if the city comes along and says, now they're City Columbus, and now they're City Columbus zoning, will they be allowed to do that? Would they choose to do that? Right now, I understand the effect is they want to keep it as parkland and leave it as is for twenty-five years. So, sounds good. What happens in the twenty-sixth year? Will they choose to do that? So that's a question I have. I think it's definitely a concern of mine, and if there's any effort that we could make in the avenue of setting up those terms, binding terms to protect the interests of the township residents, I'm one of them, and I'd like to hopefully go in that direction. I appreciate you and your efforts and your time. Thank you.
I'd like to request the opportunity to defer my comments until later on in the agenda regarding the Ohio Election Commission complaint settlement discussion and also the e-bike resolution. Is that possible?
And what's the point of that?
Closer to the trustees' discussion of the topic.
I'm not sure. So are you proposing to discuss before we vote? I'm not sure why you can't do it now.
Sure. Yes.
I'd rather you do it now.
Is that a no or a prefer?
Yeah, that's a no.
That's a no?
Yeah.
Why is that?
Honestly, I've never had anyone ask me, so I'm not sure of the point of it. If you could explain the point of it, then maybe we would consider...
It would be closer and more relevant to...
We won't forget it. We won't forget your comments. Trust me.
Okay. Regarding e-bikes, I think that the e-bike proposed resolution as it currently stands is very discriminatory against all bikes. The problem is not by e-bikes. The problems are the people on the e-bikes. So if there was a speeding car, Corvettes go fast. Are we going to ban Corvettes because they go fast? No. We're going to give them a ticket. Plus, I don't see how enforcement is going to happen. Are we going to hire additional police officers? Are we going to have additional tax levy for those additional police officers? The enforcement is not possible to do. So that's, that's the primary gist of it. The problem is, the bigger problem is pedal bikes, non-electric bikes. Those people go in gangs and go excessively fast, ignore all stop signs crossing roads, almost dare people to hit them on the trails. And e-bikes, there may be, there may be an instant or two, but it's not prevalent. So I guess I support the gentleman who said something about awareness. There needs to be a speed limit for everybody, just not electric bikes, all bikes. Some type of unilateral equalization to everybody. Just don't pick on the e-bikes. Regarding the administration, the Ohio Election Commission complaint settlement discussion, did the township, did the trustees pass a resolution authorizing Paul Wise to file a complaint against the Genoa taxpayer?
We passed a formal resolution.
Pardon?
I don't think that we passed a formal resolution.
No, I spoke to individual trustees who were in favor of doing that.
Yeah.
So you received approval from individual trustees to do that? Yes. Are you aware of the White versus Olentangi School Board litigation? It's called round robin. That's illegal. You're not allowed to seek... I can pull trustees individually, which I did. You might want to talk to legal counsel about that and check, because it is illegal. It's called round robin, and it's a way to, it was a way to bypass the formal public discussion area. So what Paul has done is by using the letterhead of the trustees, he has indicated that there's approval, and if there's not a resolution, a public resolution that supports that, then that may be illegal, and there may be ethics as well as professional violations regarding that. So wanted to bring it to your attention.
Must be alumni night. Carl Gebhardt, sixty-seven ninety-six Regency Drive. Where do I start? It's been about three more issues come up tonight, just in the last twenty minutes. How about February sixth? Trustee zoning hearing to address the consent decree for New Vision LLC versus Genoa Township. That's the EPCOM development adjacent to Renee's neighborhood. One of, if not the biggest, zoning votes taken in several years, and guess who wasn't in attendance? Our full-time zoning obsessed trustee Renee Vaughn. You owe the residents a thorough and documented justification for why you missed that meeting and vote. Renee has become quite the politician. Her absence, for whatever reason, gave her a much-needed out.
The yes vote goes against her neighbors and the stop high-density development position she likes to project. A no vote would open her up to the personal conflict of interest charge included in philosophy, which now has disappeared. So Mark, you took the fall. You knew the township had no chance to win the suit if it went forward.
There we go. I won't repeat it, but Mark, you did take the fall. You all knew the township had no chance to win the suit if it went forward. Yes, some concessions were made by EPCOM, but not game changers. The development will move forward. So knowing Connie was a yes vote, it was now up to Mark. Had Renee been present, she could have been the other yes vote and saved Mark from having to explain his yes vote for high-density development in the upcoming election. No more sign toppers for you. Instead, as it worked out, she looked out for her own interest, political future, I'm Number two, trustee appointment. Everyone else was a mystery. This is the statement made at the last trustee meeting by Renee, justifying the appointment of Annette McMurray as trustee. Well, let's explore that. Molly McHale chaired the Parks Trail Levy, chaired the Fire EMS levies, chaired Police levies, chaired the Parks Committee, which developed our Parks Master Plan and Programs. She served on the Parks Committee, provided budget and other input to the trustees on numerous occasions, participated in the Fire Academy, participated in the Police Academy, helped organize and run National Night Out event, helped organize and run Township movie nights, helped with Township Egg, Easter Egg Hunt, and Trick or Treat Village, to name some of her contributions to the township. Yet she was a mystery. Rick Carfagna, two-term Genoa Township trustee, brought integrity, professional, and business approaches to managing the township, followed the Constitution laws and the zoning resolution. Former, two-time state representative, I mean, a real state representative. Former Speaker pro temp, second only to the Speaker in the Ohio House. Served on the House Finance Committee, chaired the House Higher Education Committee. Strong family, having respect in and making... Strong family, having respect in and making contributions to the township. But Rick didn't have the skills necessary. He's a mystery? These are just two of the six options you had to choose from. So as a public records request, Pat, please provide the names and dates of all official Genoa Township committees and Genoa Township-sponsored events and activities, as well as any elected offices that Ms. McMurray, now trustee McMurray, has been involved with or has served in or on. Let me ask you this. Was it a mystery as to which applicant had a sanction imposed on her in October of 2020 by the Ohio Supreme Court? Which candidate had her attorney registration suspended in November of 2021 by the Ohio Supreme Court? I believe it was Annette McMurray in both cases. Was it a mystery as to those whose husband is the current treasurer of Genoa Township residents for Responsible Development PAC? The organization had brought one of the federal lawsuits, which they lost, attempting to violate the constitutional rights of a Genoa Township resident, demanding the former trustees ignore the zoning resolution and costing hundreds of thousands of dollars in legal fees? It's Craig McMurray, husband of Annette McMurray. Was it a mystery that this same group, which trustee McMurray is a part of and her husband is now treasurer of, made contributions to Renee Vaughn's campaign and an $800 in-kind contribution to Mark Antinet's campaign? Remember the Stop High Density Development sign toppers? Both also received GTRRD campaign endorsements. So all this information was unknown. It was a mystery. Apparently, you didn't check out these applicants. Was this information about Molly and Rick and Annette news to you tonight? Was it withheld from you during the interview process? Or did you just choose to ignore it and make the predetermined selection? It's time to be accountable. For yourself and what's right. Annette didn't even manage to run for trustee in 2021 because it's rumored she didn't manage her best buddy, the infamous Kathy Nelson, who didn't legally complete the candidate petition for McMurray. So it got thrown out. Something a serious candidate wouldn't let happen. But hey, they got go-along Mark as a last-minute substitute candidate. If there was ever a political payback, a political accommodation, most likely a conflict of interest and at a minimum ethically questionable action, your selection of Annette McMurray is it. And in no way is the township getting the skills and vision to meet the needs at this time or in any other time, as Renee also claimed in her justification. How about your justification, Mark? She's from the rural part of the township? That's it? You had the opportunity to be relevant, to stand up for yourself and what's right. Stop just going along for the ride and filling the seat. Be your own person. If you don't want to, get out. To all the Genoa Township residents that believe the Constitution, rule of law, ethics, integrity, and accountability for elected officials, you now have three trustees who attempted to deny Genoa Township residents of their constitutional rights. Trustees that have put questionable ethics, personal gain, and political favoritism above what is best for the township. As a trustee, you should be ashamed. As voters, we should be ashamed if we allow this to continue. You're welcome.
Thanks for your scripted presentation. Anything else? Anyone? Not?
I've lived in town since 2003. James Rickman, 5209 Medallion Drive East. I just want to thank Mark and Renee for being wonderful trustees. I think you've really taken good care of the town, and I've really enjoyed reading your progress and your hard work. It must be sometimes seemingly a thankless job, but thank God that you're doing it for us. And I was very happy with the resume of our new trustee, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, hearing no more. We'll move on to trustee comment.
Yeah, I have a couple things. First, I want to talk about the Columbus annexation. Unless, is that on the agenda later, or now is a good time? Okay, all right, very good. Just, I have been in touch with Columbus, and they had their first hearing for the draft, well, I guess it's final, annexation agreement between the township and Columbus. They had their first reading Monday, and I was told that their second reading will be this coming Monday on the 21st. They only expect to have two readings, and they're expected to vote on Monday. You know, I don't know anything, but my hunch is it'll be approved. Otherwise, why would we have gone through all of this? And I was told that if they approve it on Monday, it will be effective 30 days after, which would be around August 20th. Our Safety Services have a meeting next week with Columbus's Safety Services. Paul has been trying to get that meeting since May, and it just fell on deaf ears. I finally had a phone conversation with Columbus. It kind of, after we received the final copy, we were shocked that we got it because we thought Safety Services would meet first. But I was told that Columbus Safety Services has been meeting with the county to see where they're deficient because they didn't, they wanted to have all the ducks in a row before they met with our Safety Services. So that will take place next week. That is a separate issue from annexation. So I don't know how that's going to go. For the residents, when it comes to annexation, townships don't have a lot of leverage. We're lucky that Columbus wants to work with us because they could do this with or without our approval. The advantage of this agreement is that any future annexation, at least as Mr. DeBlazy pointed out, at least for the next 25 years, would need trustee approval. Whereas if Columbus does it without our permission, there would be no agreement like this. Any future annexation would not need trustee approval. So again, we don't have a whole lot of leverage in this negotiation. Any questions from anyone? Any of the chiefs want to talk about your meeting? I know you haven't had it yet, but you have any information to share? No? Okay. Paul, anything else? Okay. I want to talk about, last month, I talked about House Bill 96, which is the state operating budget. I talked about the referendum. I asked people to talk to our representatives. Unfortunately, the signatures required to put a referendum on the ballot did increase from 15% to 35%. There were some stats that were released earlier this week. In 2016, when we ran a referendum, we needed about 700. It was a little short of 700 signatures. That was based on the 2014 gubernatorial election. Today, if one were to happen in Genoa Township, it would be based on the 2022 election, which if we were, we were comparing apples to apples. In 2018, when we ran the referendum, you only needed 8% of the gubernatorial votes. If that were to happen today, you'd need 1,066 valid signatures. With this increase, you would now need 4,663 valid signatures, and that's in 30 days. To me, they've taken the voters' rights away. There's, that'd be nearly impossible to collect that many signatures in 30 days. The Budget Commission, some other changes. Right now, our Budget Commission consists of a treasurer, the county auditor, and the county prosecutor. A lot of county prosecutors recuse themselves from the Budget Commission. They think it's a conflict of interest. As part of the budget change, the prosecutor can now appoint a county commissioner. In my opinion, that's a conflict of interest because county commissioner, then they can approve their own budget. It just makes no sense. So, I'm trying. I think Dewine might have vetoed that. I'm sorry, apologize. I, no, sorry, he did not. The part that he vetoed was the fact that there was something in the budget where the Budget Commission can reduce or eliminate your inside millage, which would be any levies. In Genoa, it would be your parks levy, your fire, your roads, and your police levy. Dewine vetoed that. However, the House and the Senate are getting, voting next week on line item vetoes, and that's back on the list. So, in my opinion, again, another thing with taking the voters' rights away, the voters approved this millage, and if they want to support fire, police, parks, I think they should be able to. I don't think the Budget Commission should be able to roll back any of that. That would be up to the voters. The next time a levy is on the ballot to say, hey, we don't want to support this anymore. So, that's what I have about that. I want to address a couple of public comments. I know Mr. Watson had referenced a meeting with me last month, and I just want to clarify that I'm not responsible for putting the resolution on the ballot that came out of the Maintenance Department. I did have a conversation with Chief McMillan. We did snowball some things. He was going to look into some options for us, and then we haven't been able to reconnect. So I don't want people to think that because of Mr. Watson's comments that now we have a resolution that came from other issues that arised. As far as appointing Ms. McMurray and this being pay-to-play and maybe a favor, no. I mean, how in the world could I, when I ran three times, have known that trustee Goodman was going to resign and I'd have to appoint a new trustee? Never in my wildest dreams would I think that I would have been put in that position. So it's absurd that that would be something that would come up. And I think my words were taken out of context because in my last comments during the last trustee meeting, I didn't say that all the other candidates were a mystery. I said that how they would vote on zoning was a mystery. I didn't have any proof how the other candidates would vote on zoning. And whereas I know trustee McMurray has been instrumental in the referendum and several other issues in the township, I felt comfortable that she aligned with what the people would support. And that's it.
Thank you. I feel compelled to also comment on Mr. Gebhardt's kind and helpful comments. One is I'm not a fall guy, never been a fall guy. So at that hearing, if you paid attention, I had five safety concerns about their project, and they did not answer any of the five correctly. Didn't satisfy me that this was safe. The single entrance with no alternative emergency entrance, sprinkled homes. I gave them the opportunity to continue the hearing and address my concerns at that time of the meeting, and they chose not to. So as far as I'm concerned, they picked their choice. The fact of the matter is, it's unfortunate that it took litigation, but that litigation resulted in resolving those safety issues. So in some ways, we accomplished what we were looking for. It wasn't about density. Their density was below. That's one point. There's no bigger politician in this room than Mr. Gebhardt. Let's get that straight. If you truly cared about the township, you would take your experience here and mentor new trustees. But you don't because you don't care. You care about politics. And you come here and try to ruin our reputation, denigrate us, and you provide no positive value. And I'm just going to go on the record as saying that. So if you can continue to script your little write-ups and come in and try to ruin our reputation, the fact of the matter is nobody cares anymore. Thanks. I don't need it now. Not from you. That's all I got.
I would like to have more time to be able to respond to Mr. Gebhardt. I have known him through my involvement here in the township. I have been a community member since I was 11 years old when we moved here from the Westerville area. I moved away for nine and a half years to go to law school and lived in Chicago for a little bit and then lived in Cleveland for a little bit. My husband and I chose to move back here because we love this area. My mom and dad still live here. My kids go to big walnut schools. This is home. I believe in this community. I love this community. I have fought for this community. So if that's a problem, so be it. I don't think most people would think that. But that's fine by me, Mr. Gebhardt, if you think that. In regards to my Supreme Court and my law license, I don't practice law. I let my law license go inactive. I still do CE when the opportunity presents itself, but I was never disbarred. I was never removed. I let my license go inactive because you pay to have your license active. And I have two young children. I'd rather take my money and put it towards them than put it towards that. No, not to my knowledge. I was not sanctioned.
You don't have to have a dialogue with him.
Thank you. That's all.
All right, Paul?
Thank you. This evening, I've got a few items on the agenda. The first is from earlier this spring when I filed paperwork on behalf of the township to issue a complaint against two township residents, Mr. Fred Johnson and Mr. David Black. Those individuals put out a postcard flyer that was received by numerous township residents in their mail. The flyer had mistakes on their website listing. I had a lot of questions and complaints from residents about the flyer, which I knew nothing about. I had no contact on who to contact because they have remained anonymous through this flyer. There was no, nobody that names putting paid for by whatever group. So knowing that, I let it go for a while. But then I found out through one of the committees of the township, the Fire Advisory Board, that the two individuals, Fred Johnson and Dave Black, were actually the authors of this, and there could be others. So as the higher revise code reads or the election laws read, if two or more people use campaign literature and pay for mailing, et cetera, that qualifies them as a political action committee. So the complaint was made against the two individuals that they were a political action committee and did not file as such. So I filed the paperwork. The Ohio Elections Commission received that under case number 2025-007. And they filed a hearing coming up at the end of July on the issue. But in the meantime, the attorneys for Fred Johnson and Dave Black contacted me and have requested that a settlement be struck with the township. Even though, and she writes in her message to me that even though they still are claiming that they don't meet the definition of a political action committee, they're not required to register as such and file the accompanying reports. So Mr. Johnson and Mr. Black, as a settlement, will register as a political action committee and file all information that would apply to a political action committee report within 30 days of the settlement agreement. And in exchange, we would agree as a township to dismiss the complaint to the Ohio Elections Commission with prejudice. And the parties also agree to file a copy of the settlement agreement with the Delaware County Board of Elections. I've instructed the attorney Helen Lor that I would discuss this matter with the board at an open public meeting this evening so that you all have a chance to discuss the matter. Their quest is that we have a settlement with the two individuals that are township residents. It's up to you whether or not you want to pursue that matter or not or have them settle with us. And I'll let you discuss this now.
Do we know what they're proposing as a settlement? Do we know what they're proposing as a settlement? Miss, this isn't ever a dollar.
I don't have a written document, but their settlement is saying that they will register as a political action committee and file all the necessary paperwork.
Yeah. I don't have any desire to continue to pursue this. I think the damage was done. It didn't, it wasn't effective, and I don't know what the benefit to the township, but pursue, continue to pursue this, other than setting an example of it. You know, when we have ballot, levies on the ballot, that we expect people to obey ethics election laws, if that sets an example, then maybe we pursue it.
My opinion is, it's not up to this board. I, that's the whole point of the Ohio Ethics Commission, is to...
Elections Commission.
Thank you. Elections Commission to decide whether they are or not. This, I, I don't know.
So, just to reiterate, reiterate, the board does not want to settle with these individuals.
Well, so they're going to have a hearing, right?
Yes.
And then, will, will they expect someone from the township to be represented at this hearing?
If they want someone to be there, they'll, they'll ask. It's going to be an online hearing, so.
Sounds like they want to settle to not have that hearing, right? It sounds like they want to settle, file on the table to not have that hearing. So, if you're saying it's not your decision, it would be, go have the hearing, let them decide.
I feel like, yeah, I agree. I think.
I don't, I don't know if they are or not.
So, should you, should we just not settle with them and go through, let them go through the Elections Commission process?
I think the commission ultimately decides whether what they did was right or wrong.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm okay with that, too.
All right.
Have the hearing.
It's not, it's not costing the township anything for the hearing to take place.
Okay. So, then I will inform their attorneys that no settlement from the township will be made.
Yeah, it's a decision the commission has to make, whether or not what they did was right or wrong.
Yep. Okay. Good. That settles that one issue. Also, this evening, I have been asked by the board, some members, to discuss time limits on public comment. I'll let you folks decide, talk about that, if you'd like them or not.
So, I'll start. I chaired the zoning commission for three years prior to becoming a trustee, and not once did I ever have time limit or a clock. And I've never had an issue that caused me to change my philosophy on this. I think the residents, we work for them. If they have, they have to go on for five minutes or more, I, I'm completely and vehemently opposed to a time limit. I think it's demeaning, and I don't see the purpose in it. I think if you treat people with respect, you can do this without a time limit or a clock. So, that's much of my position.
I agree. I think as long as the respect goes both ways, I don't think that there's an issue with it.
I think 99% of the people don't abuse it, but there's that outlier periodically that does, but I'm fine for now. We'll see how it goes.
Okay. Status quo for the time being. Last up is a discussion with the board concerning the rental of the hall for parties, wedding anniversaries, et cetera, birthday parties, graduation. We have had a flurry of residents who have done damage inside the hall, minor damage. Most of the times, they're pasting things to the wall and causing paint damage. We've had to bring in a team of employees in the last couple of weeks and paint over some of those marks that they've made. We've got a nice township hall, and a lot of people listen and follow the directions, but the directions are very clear. It's on the website. It's on a receipt that if they do rent the hall, it's on the receipt that they receive. It's on the, it's on the rules inside this hall about the rentals, and usually Dina follows up sometimes with the email to the residents and mentions again about the rules. So, I'm opposed to not banning everybody. I mean, I think that HOAs, they're very good. They come in, they set up the room how they need it. They meet a maybe few times a year. They're the kind of renters that we want, nonprofits. I know the Clock Club comes in here and other groups, but we've had damage with individual renters. So, I'll let the board discuss it, whether, what you would like to do.
As a landlord, my leverage for damages deposit, is that something we can implement?
We have kept it. We've had complaints that we've kept it, because they feel that the minor damages, they want it back, and their argument, argumentative about it.
We just increased it last year, the year before. It's been fairly recently. It was a minimal deposit until a couple of years ago, but when we kept having damage that didn't, it was more damage than the deposit would cover. That's why it's, what, what is it to rent this hall? How much?
They pay an upfront fee of 400. 150 of that is the rental fee, which is non-refundable, and the 250 is a security deposit that can be refunded.
Thank you. I thought that we charge more for the deposit than we actually do to rent, and it's because of all the damage that we weren't recouping the cost of repairing the damage.
Because it's not just the repairs, it's people's time.
It's what I was going to add to that. My people spend a lot of time when it, I mean, the excessive cleaning that has to happen because of the disrespect of the building. It's the constant little repairs to large repairs. I mean, we had a coat rack ripped completely off of the wall and large holes in the wall, and it's just, it's became almost a weekly situation for us, that we've got weekly damages. And I know that Dina is very upfront and open with our renters on what they can and cannot do. I've been in her office when she spoke with them, and it's just kind of like, they're going to do it anyways. So, instead of my people being out and being able to, you know, trim trees like Mr. Watson requested, we started that two weeks ago, and we got a little ways through it, and then we had to stop and pull off to do other stuff. But just so you guys understand that my people are putting a lot of their hours in this room to keep it presentable for the next renters and for our meetings.
There's no legal reason that we could be discriminating that you're concerned about?
No. You're the landlord, and we're just trying to protect our assets.
Absolutely.
There was a gaping hole above Renee's head that the boys had to fix. It was up, it was into the drywall from, I don't know what caused it, but, yeah. We even had, this was a couple of years ago, there's, we actually had a rave in this building, which was, they were charging admission to come in, and it was like a nightclub. They had blasting music. So, yeah, I mean, it's, there's a lack of facilities to rent around, so we get the brunt of it.
I think, I think I've heard enough to...
And that's why I had them, I talked to staff this week, and I'm like, can we put this on the agenda? Like, I had no idea either. But I, you know, and I'd like to keep it open to the public, but when you're faced with this issue, I'm sorry, but it's the people who don't follow the rules who ruin it for everybody.
And I think you said specifically, there's occasions where they'll actually use a resident to get the, the rent, but they're, actually, the rent, the resident isn't even participating. So, for that reason, I'm going to move to limit the public comment portion. Oh, no, no.
Whoops.
Next one.
I'm going to move to no longer rent the Genoa Township Hall for Events. The hall will be available for reservation for only nonprofit organizations, schools, and neighborhood groups. Do I have a second?
Second.
You guys are getting racing. Discussion?
One comment. Obviously, we have people that rented this facility. We're going to let those grandfather out and just limit anybody's new rentals. Leslie will make the changes on the website now, so.
Good. Perfect. Any further discussion? Rule?
Ms. McMurray?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Antoinette?
Yes. Motion passed. Chief?
Commissioner Wise is going to take care of it.
Yes. Yes. We have gone through and passed the resolution of necessity, and we received the auditor's certification for the police levy. I ask the board now acknowledge that the Delaware County Auditor's Certificate of Estimated Property Tax Revenue.
I move to acknowledge the Delaware County Auditor's Certificate of Estimated Property Tax Revenue for a renewal and increase of 4.95 mils to levy a tax outside the 10 mil limitation for police purposes, to be placed on the November 4th, 2025 general election. The estimated property tax revenue that will be produced by the state millage is calculated to be $5,610,594 annually. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Rule?
Ms. McMurray?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Antoinette?
Yes. Motion passed.
Thank you. Next step, next step to file this material with the Board of Elections is to pass a resolution to proceed with the levy. I ask the board to consider that at this time.
It's not on this script?
Yes, it is. Right under the resolution just passed.
Yep.
It's in bold.
All that? Do you want me to read all that?
As presented.
I move to pass resolution to proceed with submission of the question of levying an annual renewal and increase of a tax in excess of the 10 mil limitation as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? None. Rule?
Ms. McMurray?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Antoinette?
Yes. Passed.
Once the signatures are on the levy, Dawn is going to finish the levy paperwork with typing in the resolution numbers. Don't leave this evening without getting it signed, so I can file the paperwork tomorrow with the Board of Elections. Thank you.
Very good. Chief Ponzi, you're up.
I am. Thank you. That was quicker. Yeah. Quicker than I anticipated. Thank you, board, and good evening. First item on the agenda, I would, excuse me, regretfully request that you would accept the retirement letter from Lieutenant Chad Cochran, placing his effective retirement date with the Genoa Township Fire Department as July 31st of 2025. And if I may just embellish a little bit.
Please.
Chad began his career with the Genoa Township Fire Department in June of 2001, and continued on until April of 2021, where he was promoted to the rank of lieutenant, at which he, that rank of which he will retire at. We will miss Chad and his can-do and positive attitude towards getting things done at emergency incidents and within the firehouse, but we wish him nothing but the best as he moves forward towards his retirement. I hope that he now will have enough time for his love of golfing and fishing in his retirement, and we wish him a long and healthy retirement with his wife Jen, or Jennifer, and his two boys Nate and Colby. And I would request that you accept his retirement letter.
Move to regretfully accept the retirement of Fire Department Lieutenant Chad Cochran effective July 31st, 2025. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? None. Rule?
Ms. McMurray?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Antoinette?
Yes. Thank you.
And secondly, an item that's been a little bit slow-moving, because it's a new program, is I spoke to you about this program at least six months ago, if not eight months ago. It is a, it's another form of reimbursement that we're pursuing for EMS transportation. This is it. The contract in front of you is entering with a contract with Public Consulting Group. There are new avenues of recouping funds from Medicare and Medicaid from our EMS transportation billing program. This consultant believes in our first year, revenue is a little low of additional funding, but around $17,000. They would anticipate that we could recoup, and then hopefully it will continue to grow from there. But it is another opportunity for us to find reimbursement and additional funding for the EMS operations within the department. Obviously, these funds, no different than EMS billing, would go into the EMS operation within the Fire Department, and I would respectfully request that you would authorize the contract, and then also authorize Mr. Wise to sign the contract, so that we may get this program started.
Very good. I move to enter into an agreement with Public Consulting Group LLC for a Public Consulting Group Emergency Services Agreement effective July 17th, 2025, and authorize Township Administrator Paul Wise to sign the agreement on behalf of the Board of Trustees. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
And if I may, one other thing I neglected to say is, the contract was provided to us by PCG. We vetted that through Attorney Go, Corey Go, our prosecuting attorney. We added some extra language to it, we all, that they also agreed to, the consulting group, and so it's been reviewed on both sides, and everyone's happy with it, so.
Great. I appreciate your due diligence on that. Any other discussion? None. Rule?
Ms. McMurray?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Antoinette?
Yes. Motion passed.
Thank you.
Lauren, you're up.
Good evening, board. First item this evening, I ask you to approve the resolution to terminate Park Seasonal Technician Jacob Corbin effective July 14th of 2025.
I move to approve the termination of Park Seasonal Technician Jacob Corbin effective July 14th, 2025. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? None.
Ms. McMurray?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Antoinette?
Yes. Motion passed.
Second item I have for you is the job descriptions for the Maintenance Technician Two for our Maintenance Department, which includes our Parks, Buildings and Grounds, and Roads Department. These were the rough drafts that we shared with you at the special meeting on June 26th, and then Donna and I and Paul worked together for the final drafts, and you have those this evening. So, I ask you to approve the Maintenance Technician Two job descriptions.
I move to approve the Maintenance Technician Two job description effective June 10th, 2025. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Ms. McMurray?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Antoinette?
Yes. Motion passed.
I move to approve the Parks, Buildings, and Grounds Technician Two job description effective June 10th, 2025. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? None. Rule?
Ms. McMurray?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Antoinette?
Yes. Motion passed.
So, following up to the job descriptions, I'd like to ask for an internal job posting for the two job description postings to be posted to our website internally for our employees.
I have no problem with that.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
Yeah. Makes sense.
Okay, so now I'll move on to the oh-so-popular, not-so-popular e-bike resolution. The resolution that I'm presenting this evening is to prohibit the use of low-speed micro-mobility devices and electric bicycles within the parks of Genoa Township. This is, has the exception of the Ohio-to-Erie Trail and the Connector Trails. So, the Connector Trails and the Erie Trail, you know, the bike trails along the roadways, that's not what we're trying to do. It's only within the park acreage. Just to share a little bit of information with you guys on how we have got to this point, I actually stopped in and talked to Paul about the situation. We were having a lot of trouble in the parks with our employees, with residents, et cetera. So, I presented it to Paul. We've had three near misses with our zero-turn mowers now in Freeman Park with children at high speeds. They're using Freeman Park as literally a NASCAR track. There's typically five boys there that's zooming around, and yeah, it's, we've had, we've had those three near misses with my employees, so we have that big concern there. My, me myself was at Freeman Park last week. There was three boys and a young girl riding on the ninja court, and then they would ride around the swing sets. So, I walked over to them... around the swing sets. So I walked over to them and asked the kids to keep it on the trails because it's not an official park rule at the moment. So I didn't ask them to leave. I just asked them to keep it on the trails, and I got a lot of pushback from the moms. So the parents were, were there, and we got a lot of pushback from that. We're getting multiple phone calls from residents, not only in the parks but on the sidewalks, said I got buzzed on the sidewalk. My elderly mother got knocked down on the sidewalk. That was in Highland Lakes. So I brought it up to Paul. He said, let's sit down with PD. Before I could call PD, Deputy Chief Denman contacted me and wanted to speak to me about e-bikes because of all the complaints and situations they are having with them. So I sat down with Lieutenant Breeze and Deputy Chief Denman, and we discussed all the ORC codes that go along with this, our options. We have the options as a township to prohibit them everywhere, and that's not what we want to do. Right now, we would like to, you know, look at that within the park acreage just because of the dangers of, you know, the kids and adults that, that use the parks. I was speaking to a park user, two adults that was in the park and on their e-bikes. They weren't causing any trouble. We was just chit-chatting. I kind of wanted to get some information. I'm like, well, how fast does your bike go? 50 miles per hour. That's impressive. I had no idea. I don't, I, you know, I don't e-bike, so I, you know, I had no idea. So it's, it is an Ohio revised code that they are not to go over 20 miles per hour. So with this, I would like to add the 20 mile per hour signage to the Erie Trail. It would be for everyone on the trail to stay under the 20 miles per hour. No, we can't sit out there with a police officer and shoot the gun, but we hope that the users respect our rules and our requests and, and the ORC. Think that's most of the points that I wanted to share so far, that, you know, situations that we've had personally. My, my PAC committee actually brought this up to me in our previous meeting, and school had not let out yet. And it was like when school let out, the floodgates let out. And that's when all the trouble started with. And, you know, our concern is safety. It's not, we're not trying to take anything away from anyone, but it was just safety within the parks.
So I use those trails. I ride a bike on those trails, and I agree with the assessments that standard pedal bicycles can be just as dangerous. They fly down through that trail and expect people to move out of their way. However, I do think it's a valid concern about the ability for people to use these that need it for rehabilitation purposes. So for that reason, I think, do, do we know what connector trails means? Is that all the paths in the township?
That's any of the trails in the townships outside of the acreage of the park. So any of them that lead to the Erie Trail, you know, the, the trail on Max Town Road, the one that runs by Renee's Development, you know, those, we're not going to restrict any of those. They can still access the Erie Trail, and they can still use the Erie Trail for their e-bikes. We're just talking within the parks themselves.
Well, you have some trails that are in, within McNamara Park. Are those going to be?
Those would be restricted. Those would be restricted inside. Once you enter from the Erie Trail, that would be a restricted area.
What would you do if a resident wants to use the restroom in McNamara, and they can't go there, or go from the Erie Trail on three and connect to the trail right outside of here? The only connected trail is McNamara Park.
I, I do understand that with the restroom. I mean, it's close to the Erie Trail, so if they had to walk an e-bike over, I think that's sufficient. Connecting to this side, that's where we come in with, you know, we're trying to get the connection.
We've got, there are connections across. We have Freeman Road that connects across. There's nothing against walking a bike in and using the restrooms. You know, they're not on it. They're not riding it. You can walk it in if they need to use a restroom. But, you know, we're just trying to watch out for children, strollers, and elderly people that are being pushed off. So it's up to you folks.
So when I, when I get on the Erie Trail, I'm coming right here by the Township Hall of Old 3C through McNamara Park, and your saying is they would have to get off and walk literally from Old 3C all the way to the Erie Trail?
If they would want to go through McNamara Park, yes.
Unless they can continue down Big Walnut.
On the road.
On the road.
But they're being used on the road by kids all through Highland Lakes. There was an accident on St. Andrews where a child, you know, was, had an accident in the middle of the road, and St. Andrews has no sidewalks. So, I mean, even the kids are using the sidewalks or the non-sidewalk areas to, to get, get around.
But I think using a neighborhood street versus Big Walnut is different because traffic is going faster. There's more, yeah, there's, there's more traffic in general.
My only, my only thought to resolution to connect them is to restrict them to the south trail that goes against Beespoke and against the maintenance department. It's not near any playgrounds. It's, it's not near the shelter house. They can stay on that outside trail. We'd have to restrict that, but then that kind of, it kind of opens a can of worms. But if they, if they respect the rules, and hopefully they will, they'll continue to use that. We could always, we could always sign it, you know, it's for the e-bikes, but that's my only thought on how to fix that direct issue.
How are we going to manage this, to make sure that folks are abiding by it? I guess that's?
Well, it's kind of like any other park rule. We hope they abide by it because they respect our parks. When our employees are in the parks, or I'm in the parks, we can request that they respect those. I mean, if they continually, you know, we have a continuous problem with the same person.
Then that's where the enforcement?
That's, that's where the enforcement would have to come in, and we'd have to get PD involved.
I reached out to Orange Township just to see what they're doing. The sheriff's office has said that they're not going to enforce any rules on paths. They're not going to enforce or even patrol paths. So it's a non, I mean, I won't say it's a non-issue. They're having issues, but they can't pass anything because it's not enforceable. Whereas we're different. We have our own police department. I, I'm not ready to pass a resolution. I'm not here yet. Maybe I never will be. Just, I, I appreciate everybody who's come here tonight and given their input, especially the people who aren't teens, because it seems like a lot of these are teens. I also appreciate everybody who's called, text, emailed me. I'm trying to come up with a balance here with safety. The only thing I can think of, and I'm just throwing this out there, it may not stick, is put, adding to the park rule, and I did talk to Lauren about this today, adding a park rule that if you're on an e-bike and you're under 16, you need to have adult supervision. I don't know that that's going to fix it because after talking to Lauren today, the parents were there, and they're not enforcing it anyway. So I don't have a solution right now. But I'm, I'm all ears. If somebody out there thinks they have an idea that might work, please reach out. I do think awareness is a big part of it. I mean, I think people know that they exist. I don't know if people necessarily know what's happening in the parks, that it's being disruptive to others. So maybe it's just bringing awareness. I think we're always going to have the challenges with the parents.
If you don't spend the amount of time in the parks that my staff and I spend, you really don't know what.
What's going on.
And you don't realize how big the issue really is.
Yeah.
How about, Chief, you want to provide some input on enforcement?
So I can echo what the director said earlier, reference to complaints. We are starting to receive a lot more complaints at the PD. And, and I know right now that we're focusing on the small amount of the parks, but the complaints are starting to come throughout the township. A lot of complaints on sidewalks and on the roads and disrespectful driving and things like that. And the Ohio law hasn't, hasn't really caught up with new technology. I know there's a couple of classes, and again, as one of the residents came up today and said, well, class two is a 20 miles an hour, class three is 28 miles an hour, but as we heard today, you know, there's people like, oh, mine don't go over 50 miles an hour. So they're definitely not, it's not caught up yet for law enforcement. So we are receiving a lot of the complaints like the director said. And when it comes, when it comes to us in, in law enforcement, and we, we only have a couple of tools with, with what we can do. And we have been working on what we, what we're calling education right now. And if the resolution passes, we would still work education before enforcement, but then if a resolution was passed, it would give that ultimate line if we absolutely had to. But we're learning about the law as well and trying to go out there and add, add education. I think Lieutenant Breeze has posted a few things on our Facebook page to try to help, help with some awareness and continuing to try that path.
I'm, I'm struggling with this also. I, I think it's reasonable to restrict these bikes within the park. Mr. McHale made a compelling argument on why it doesn't make sense to completely eliminate them. I think a lot of people that are using them are cautious and courteous, and I don't think it'd be fair to, to restrict their abuse of it. So I guess I would like to also think about it too. I, I mean, if you want to pass a resolution restricting them within the park, I can understand that. The trails, I really struggle with how we.
Yeah, and I'm not asking for trails. I'm only asking for within the parks.
You okay with that? I mean, I can, I could support that.
I'd like to have a little bit more time just to do some research on it and see, I mean, not just neighboring, but what's happening across the state. I mean, I think that we can maybe look to see other areas, how they're handling it, because it can't just be us that is dealing with this. And I mean, it sounds like the law hasn't quite caught up. So I, I would appreciate a little bit more time to be able to, to do some more research.
Okay.
I mean, another good reason to adopt this is then in the event that someone gets seriously injured, then we have some bite on what we can do with them. Right now, there's nothing that they can go to that. So let's put it on the next month.
In, in most of our parks, we already have signage that was posted when Bob was the director that states that man-powered bicycles and recreation equipment only already. And then some of them say no motorized equipment in the parks. So, but it's not on the park rules, so it's not something we can enforce. But the signage pertaining directly to this has been up for years.
Yeah, my husband, he, he was like, well, aren't they already banned because there's those signs?
Okay, you're, okay?
Yeah, it's, it's completely up to you guys, so.
All right. So we'll continue that for the next meeting?
And I'll be happy to, I, I've got some friends within the park systems, you know, Worthington, Marysville, stuff like that. I can get some information from them as well to share more information, maybe at the next meeting with you guys.
Yeah, that would be great.
Okay, so I'll move on to our discussion on the McNamara Park barn demo. I provided the three of you with, I believe, four quotes for demo, and all of our quotes for the rebuild, which were from several years ago, which was pretty extreme on the cost. So I'm just throwing it out to you three to discuss. Have any questions?
Any questions?
So is this something that you, I've, I've got them. I haven't looked directly into the companies to kind of look at their reputation and, and that sort of thing, but do I have permission to do so?
Yeah.
Okay.
Definitely.
Okay. The last resolution that I'm going to ask for, it's a purchase order, and this is for asphalt repairs in the amount of $12,864.76. Where this comes from is my purchase orders for specific roads that we resurfaced this year. We got about a week ahead of schedule. We, we took care of our time pretty well, so I didn't have to have the crews there as many days as we had planned. So that saved us almost $13,000. So I'd like to put that $13,000 in the general asphalt repairs like we're doing this week. We're doing some milling fill this week. We've had crack seal coming up this fall. We have mastic seal coming up this fall. So that'll all take care of those asphalt repairs as well. So I would like to move that into that account to meet that 1.5 that we had spoke about.
Yeah. I move to approve a blanket purchase order in the amount of $12,864.76 for township asphalt repairs. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? None. Roll.
Ms. McMurray?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Antoinette?
Yes. Motion passed.
And just real quick unofficial, I got a couple of things that I would like to, to state this evening. I want to thank Chief Ponzi and his staff. We are right in the middle of our restroom restoration, so there is no restroom in our building. So I had Brooke look into a men's, women's trailer for flush restrooms to put in the parking lot for my guys and for Brooke and I. It was a little over $6,000 for one month. So I approached Chief Ponzi, and I'm like, hey, chief.
Can we run over there?
Can we get access to your building to maybe use the restrooms by the Sally Port? And he and his staff was kind enough to allow us to do that and get us building access for the key fob, so thank you.
Greatly, greatly reduced costs.
And I have a women's room now. So excited.
Taxpayers appreciate you.
And I, I want to do one more thank you to PD, Fire, and to Leslie. They all three posted about fireworks in the parks. I did not have one situation where we even cleaned up residue from fireworks being let off in the parks. So shout out to the residents and you three for helping me out with that because it's been a real problem the last several years. So thank you guys very much. That's all I have.
Thanks. A few announcements. July 22nd, Board of Zoning Appeals Meeting. July 26th, Police Open House. August 5th, the National Night Out. August 6th, Parks Advisory Committee. August 9th, Movie Night Out. And the next regular meeting of the trustees will be August 12th, 2025. No more business?
Chair.
Yes, sorry.
Can I make one statement?
Yeah.
Thank you. I failed during trustee comments to address a concern that was brought up by Mr. Gephardt. I wasn't sure if I was allowed to address this, but he addressed the February 6th meeting. I did not attend. I was advised by two attorneys that it was a conflict of interest for me to vote on that zoning issue, EBCON. The original zoning hearing where we voted it down, it only included the parcel behind the police station. But when we negotiated an agreement with EBCON through legal counsel, it then included the parcel at the end of my street with Mr. Berlin. He had requested access. Because the new agreement included that additional property, it became a conflict of interest for me to vote on that issue. Everybody knew ahead of time that it was a conflict for me. I would not attend. So that was my reason for missing the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Why wasn't that clarified in the meeting? Mark said that you had a family meeting.
We're not going to have.
He said a personal, personal reasons. He said personal reasons.
There's no more business to come before the board. I move to adjourn this meeting at 7:53. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? None. Roll.
Ms. McMurray?
Yes.
Ms. Vaughn?
Yes.
Mr. Antoinette?
Meeting adjourned.